Next work session is Parks and Recreation update. Mr. Luthier.
Thank you all very much. It's a tough act to follow, so I will start by saying that what I'm going to try to do in giving you all an overview is going to be more about trying to thread a story together. The last time I came to give an update to the board was back in December. This month is actually fortuitous because it's National Park and Recreation Month. July always is Park and Recreation Month. And as I was thinking about how to sort of tell the story of who we are and why we are, this year's theme is where community grows, and that really fit in well with our DNA and what we are as a department and how we interact with the community. So, the slide before you, there's a couple of things I want to point out. I'm going to kind of tell a little story, but if you'll bear with me, I think you'll see where the journey is trying to end up. Following Chief Center, you know, as we look at Parks and Recreation, we're not a mandated service. You know, the one thing I've learned in my personal life, I enjoy, I'm always trying to improve my navigational skills, marine navigation and land navigation, and you can't get where you're going if you don't know where your north is. And for an organization like the fire department, you know, protecting life and property is always an orientation to true north. For us, it's a little different because we're all about the community. And what I try to explain to people is that's ingrained in our history and how we've evolved as an organization because it really is a collaboration with the community. And so, there's a couple of things up here in the logos that you see on the screen in front of you. We did celebrate our 50th anniversary. It's been a few years, but COVID sort of impacted that. But I think that's important because that 50th anniversary really helps me and the department find our north, which is in stewardship of resources. Our fundamental purpose is to maintain the assets that are entrusted to us in this community. And as a close second to that, not only do we have those spaces, but we have to do something with them to make them have value for the community. And so, a lot of our operating mission is focused around that. And as I go through the slides, it kind of gives you a flavor of what we've been doing and how we've been doing it. That thread of always keeping the community in mind is what defines us. Because if you think about a compass and having to adjust from true north to, you know, the declination and where you are, we always live in that space, that adjustment space, in trying to keep in mind our true north, but always working towards, working with the community to find out what it is that we can do to make our parks better, to make the activities that we provide for the community more meaningful. I'll leave you with just one thought on that. We are an accredited agency, and we're very proud of that. And our peer group, as we think about who we are, I did some quick math. It's very hard to pin down, but there's somewhere around 38,000 local parks departments nationally. There's 193 that are accredited. We are accredited and we are getting our second, it's a five-year cycle. We'll receive our reaccreditation coming up here in September. So, we're one of 93 in the country, and we're only, we're one of 11 in the state of Virginia. To get accredited, we have to adhere to 152 standards. You can't miss any critical ones, and you can't miss more than 10%. We passed both initial accreditation and reaccreditation with 100% score. So, I think that speaks to the pride that we take in working for the benefit of the community. And with that, I'm going to lead right into who we are. And again, the thread, the theme of, you know, growing community is important. A lot of what we think about and how we operate is not, is finding levers to work better with the community. So, what you see in front of you is just a small sampling of some of the organizations that we routinely work with to make an impact for the community. We can't do it by ourselves. We're good at many things, but we can't do all. So, where we're good and where we can provide facilities, we work collaboratively. And just, if you work around that slide, just a couple of highlights. Swim RVA, a great resource in helping to provide access to public water for the community. Only 31% of departments nationally have a swim facility. We here have the benefit of having a community facility that we can support, but don't have to bear 100% of the costs and all the good things that Swim RVA is able to do off of that platform. Very similarly with First T. They operate on county land out of a county park. 35% nationally, local departments are in the golf business. We are not directly in the golf business, but our residents benefit from having access to that facility there. First T serves almost 30,000 rounds and close to 25,000 children here in Chesterfield, exposing them to lifelong lessons through the game of golf. Sportable, another great partnership that we do because they use our facilities. And we've really helped them, particularly the slide you see here, the Adaptive Archery Program. It's won some national recognition for Sportable, as well as the Adaptive Paddling Program. They have several programs that they've run in conjunction with us, and we really are kind of the behind-the-scenes lift to help them get that platform off of the ground. And again, it's a great exercise in showing how that collaboration and partnership can really work to the benefit of the community. And then finally, not last, but certainly not least, our continuing relationship with the YMCA. They're obviously in the swim space, but in youth sports, they make use of coming through us to access our schools and our parks for the things that we manage to be able to expand their programming. And right now, over the last three sports cycles, they've been able to use our facilities here to reach over 7,000 youth in their sports programming. One of the other areas that we're in and that's really unique, again, goes back to our DNA and that origin story, is we're one of the few departments in recreation that has a very robust history component. And again, here, it's collaborative. Everything we do, we have staff that have knowledge and expertise, but everything we do in this space is predicated on partnering with community partners. So, again, up here, you'll see some representation of things that we do to help these community partners make better use of our resources and their knowledge to bring history and the story of this community to life for the residents. So, again, working with the Chesterfield Historical Society, working with the Henricus Foundation, working with Midlothian Mines to put on activities that bring sites that we are responsible for in terms of stewardship to life for the benefit of the community. I will mention, in terms of planning going forward, we're looking forward this year to the Eppington, the annual Eppington Day. This year is going to be a collaboration where the Henricus Foundation is working to help put on the event, so it's going to be much more of a collaborative effort. It will be the 23rd of September, which happens to be the first day of fall, so we're calling it the Fall Festival at Historic Eppington. And again, a great example of what we're able to do with some collaboration. Henricus Foundation has already gone out and gotten some support funding from Dominion Energy. Eppington Foundation is doing the same thing. So, it's a mutual lift by many parties to make best use for the community for that asset. And then finally, I'll touch on, I think there were some questions about our involvement in the 250th anniversary or recognition of the American Revolutionary War. We are involved in that, again, in a partnership arrangement. That's a regional effort led through the Virginia Tourism Corporation, but actually here locally, it's split between our staff, the Chesterfield Historical Society, and their volunteers and historians, as well as community information and resources, taking the lead on making sure, again, our assets that have historical provenance to the story of the American Revolution are threaded into the narrative as we come up on the 250th anniversary, 1775 through 2025, through the eight years of the American Revolution. Certainly, we like to bring fun to the community as well.
I think your slide is...
I was wondering. Thank you. So, community fun is, covers a broad swath of things that you're familiar with. And again, up here, just a quick hit, we categorize our efforts in the sports realm in here as, again, using our spaces and our park facilities to set a foundation for activities, both for local activities as well as visitors coming in. We are working very well with JC and the newly seated Sports and Entertainment Department. It's really been a great clarification of what we're good at because we, again, are in the asset business. We're in the visitor experience business. JC and his organization are sales and marketing, and working together, we can achieve a whole lot more. I will mention, not to steal any thunder, but we're on track this year, calendar year, to break 100 tournament visitation-driven activities here locally, projecting a $90 million regional economic impact and a $40 million local impact. And of course, that delta offers some opportunities, I think, to capture some more private synergy to give more spend opportunities for those activities to make that percentage skew a little differently. I will say again, up here, there's, we did a ribbon cutting and a little community event over at Swift Creek Middle School, a great community opportunity. We had a wonderful attendance at our trunk or treat at the fairgrounds. We had over 10,000 people we know in the fence line of the July 4th event. So, again, all of those share in common, using our parks and using our human talent and using our community partners to put on something that's fun and engaging for the community. And last but not least, and I know Brenda will speak, I think, at your evening session, but we have the fair coming around again, and that certainly is a great use, again, of a partnership to bring one of the very few state fair, or local fairs hosted by a county right over here to our facility. Starts up on the 25th of September. Now, community entertainment, just a little slice that we've, I think, found our groove, finally, no pun intended, with the, working with event makers and bringing the After Hours Concert Series over there to River City. Again, this is converging to very much a partnership with the operator, as well as JC and his group in their sports and entertainment realm. We have eight shows that are booked. There are two remaining. There's one on the 9th of September, and the season concludes on the 29th of September. The shows have done well in terms of gate. The shows are averaging each close to about 2,000 tickets sold. So, again, a wonderful example of how we can use a resource for the benefit of the community and make a better lift in conjunction with working with others that have more expertise in areas than we do. Now, this is one that is really special for us. I always tell people, when summer feels normal, and it's been particularly gratifying for me to have a summer camp at Buella. I'll mention that in a minute. But this is, you know, for the eight weeks in the summer, this is what we're built to do, which is serve local youth with summer camp opportunities. For many of those youth, this may be the highlight of their summer. I mean, this may be the one event or activity that they have that sort of distinguishes their summer from just sitting at home and playing on an electronic device. We have 1,300 campers collectively, individually enrolled out throughout our camp programs. Again, at Buella, that's opened this year for the first time as a campsite. So, for staff, it's been great. I can walk out of my office and hear laughing kids and having a good time. You won't find many staff around because everybody's in t-shirts out and about with the kids, and it's what we're built to do. And it's been very gratifying to see that return to some normalcy, and we intend very much to build on that as we go forward. One of the things I always like to mention in conjunction with that summer camp season is the emphasis we place not just on the campers, but on the counselors. There are tend to be a younger cohort as well. We have 27 staff on with us this summer, and we make a very conscious effort to make an investment in their quality of work experience because for many of them, this is their first time, you know, in an employment capacity, and we want them to return and, you know, maybe cycle through with us for a couple of years. And so, that's very important. And the other thing is HR is helping us. We have, you met some of, Emma and Jewel earlier in the intern introduction on the collegiate level, but we also, thanks to partnership with HR, or help with HR and working with Chesterfield Schools, we also have a pilot program to bring in interns from the work-based learning program. We have nine. They're all high school students. They're working for us. They're getting paid the wage that we pay, roughly about $20 an hour for summer camp. We have some at Henricus. We have two that work in our special events section. But they're qualified to get academic credit through their counselors for that program. So, they get paid, summer job, and they also get academic credit. And our intention is to run that through seasonally so we can cycle through a fall-winter and then a spring season. So, again, talent development is what we're about for self-preservation reasons, as well as for building opportunities for the community. The last program piece I'm going to speak to is one that's unique to our area, and I'm going to call this our community education, nature, and outdoor focus. I was trying in this presentation to kind of evaluate ourself against peer agencies, particularly in the state. And if you start drawing circles for agencies that have, departments that have, like we do, a park naturalist, a nature center, an embedded cooperative extension program, local conservation areas, a large, the largest state park in the system at Pocahontas that we work collaboratively. If you start drawing all those circles and trying to find other agencies that have that intersection, I can't find any. The closest one I can find is the Northern Virginia Park Authority, which is an assembly of six localities that have a true park authority. They don't, they have a battlefield park, they don't have a state park, and they actually don't have an ingrained extension office. But the long story short is, I really believe this area is unique to our build, and so we're being very deliberate about how we take these educational areas that we have expertise in and collectively do better in serving our residents with them. So, we have over 18,000 hours in experience represented by volunteers through the Master Gardener Program. We want to make sure that those master gardeners are going out now to our centers, our recreation centers, and are in the community to bring, you know, composting workshops or to bring our community garden program to where our customers are. They already are getting excited about doing some community gardening and some demonstration areas at our new Buella Recreation Center. We participated collaboratively, again, in the county's inaugural Earth Day event over at the fairgrounds. Again, a cooperative effort interdepartment on our end with our Rockwood Nature staff, as well as cooperative extension. We also have a farmer's market, and again, that's something that falls under our purview. It's done very well. I guess the market was today. We're averaging about 1,000 visitors per market, weather conditions have been favorable. But again, I think as I look at this composite slide and just leave you with an idea that we are very unique and we want to get better in those relationships that we have with the community to bring our product to more people and to make more effective use of our resources. With that, I'm going to transition into some of the brick and mortar things that are going on, and we have a lot, but certainly I wanted to start with the opening of Buella. It's, again, a summer camp site, so we were able to get the opening done and time to open it up for our summer camp. We started Friday Pickleball, pickup pickleball. We're upstaffing now with the beginning of the fiscal year, and so, we will run into full operational hours for full community rental use beginning the 1st of September. I would like to acknowledge, the road to that building has been a long one. It predates me, so I'm just here, I think, benefiting from a lot of hard work by a lot of others, but certainly, General Services deserves a huge thank you for bringing this to reality. And we're not finished yet on this site. The image, the graphic that you see in the center of the slide, we have the park component for this site in the queue. The bid specs and plans are done. They're in procurement, and that project should come to you all for consideration of contract award at your October meeting with an anticipation. We would do a fall groundbreaking and a spring of 2025 grand opening. And again, the community features in this concept plan, there is a component for field use, but as importantly, there's really a desire to listen to what we are hearing from the community about a space for the community to come out and have activities and bring their family. So, this park is very much oriented around complementing the mission of that recreation center. Moving on to some ongoing projects at River City, we've had, this is even pre-bond funding. We have used some available dollars, and again, this is an exercise, we're working closely in conjunction with the Sports and Entertainment Department and JC, but we're trying to be very purposeful about doing things that differentiate our facilities in the market. So, we've done some facelift things at the existing facility out there to enhance the visitor experience. We've got new tables and shade seating out there. We've repurposed the concession spaces for more flexible uses. There's vending machines out there now. So, there's just things that we are constantly trying to do with feedback from our visitors and working with JC and his groups to take feedback and improve the experience out there. And of course, everything we do as we grow our portfolio benefits not only the visitors that come in, but our own youth that play on these facilities during the week. And then, of course, at River City, that's sort of the leadoff to the 2022 bond and the funding that's coming available. So, really, with that project, it's already in the works. It was an accelerated funding for that. It was one of the funds off of the first sale, excuse me. So, we're going to be basically finishing off the plans for River City, and that includes most immediately completing new fields, four new fields, as well as expanding some parking out there. So, we will have a 16-field rectangular complex, which will essentially put us in a category killer position when you talk about assemblages of fields in one location. Again, benefiting the market that we have for visitors, as well as supporting the activities that take place here. And then, longer term, to finish it off, we're going to play off, again, the lessons that we've learned about the value of the community uses there to include a park and to include some trails and some other community uses that really make this complex not just for the visitor or not just for the park enthusiast, or the sports enthusiast, but for the general population to come out and play on a playground or use a spray ground or take an evening walk or things like that. We also are very excited off of the bond, and we actually have some advanced projects going on at Horner Park. Horner Park is positioned with a lot of rooftops around it, and that park is our largest by land area and is open in the late 90s, and we now, for the first time, have water to the site. So, we now have fields that are irrigated, and we have restrooms, two restrooms that are going up. Those will be, for the first time in that park's history, you know, potable water and flush toilets. So, we think that's a huge game changer. But then, looking to the bond, we have the ability to add value in our athletic portfolio, as well as, again, come back and look at those rooftops in the communities out there and address community needs. So, things like a dog park, things like an archery course, things like walking trails and play equipment. All those things are included in the bond-funded additions to Horner for the benefit of the residents that are certainly out in that western corridor. We are actively closing out the completion of the third phase of Harrogate Park. We're looking at substantial completion by the contractor coming up here probably about Thanksgiving. So, we would have a soft opening off-season and plan a spring formal celebration with the community. As you all may know, we broke this park into manageable bites, but this is really the park piece that the community was most excited about, bringing trails, picnic pavilion, play equipment to their community. So, I know this is very eagerly anticipated by the community, and we're looking forward to getting this one done and opened. We also are wrapping up what is for us a very new project, but we have the fields pretty much done at both Monikin and Byrd. They turned out really nicely. The color schemes look great. We're ready for ribbon cuttings, and we'll do those in conjunction with their first home football games. Monikin plays on the 15th of September. They don't, they start their season away, so their first home game is against Cosby. And then, at Byrd, Byrd actually is the first high school game, I guess it's kind of like the NFL where they have that Thursday night kickoff. So, VHSL has their first home opener and happens to be hosted by Byrd. They're playing James River at home on the 24th. So, the Thursday before the fair opens at Byrd, we will be clipping a ribbon and the athletes will be taking the field on the brand-new turf there at Byrd.
I feel that that's coming up. Yeah, well, we're off to the date.
I'm, I'm going to close out my update and speak. When I mentioned true north in the beginning, I very much come back to this always as grounding. All the things that we do to provide value for the community begins and ends with the quality of our product. It's no surprise that out of our complement, you know, roughly 60% of our focus in terms of assets is focused towards, and when you talk about growing the community, we grow and cut grass, and we make sure that restrooms are clean, and we make sure that the facilities that, to which are entrusted, we are entrusted, are maintained to the level of quality, of safety, all those things that are important to the users. It's really a three-pronged approach for us in operations. We certainly have a focus on athletic facility operations, and we're trying to do better with that. We are essentially trying to, you know, we have quite a portfolio of activities. As I said, we did, we support right now seven locally, seven recreation groups. That includes Sportable. There's 27 elementary school zone, youth associations, and 29 athletic leagues. So, we're talking about roughly 40,000 young boys and girls in the county that are playing on our fields. We manage a total of 246 fields. 79 of those are what we call our Class 1 fields. That's Bermuda irrigation and lights. So, we are trying to come up with a way that we can level up the quality across the board in all these facilities that we maintain. Currently, we're at about 3,000 game day preparations and almost 30,000 acres annually of turf grass that's mowed. And what we're doing here, but to do this better, is we are consolidating sports operations into one operational district rather than embedding it in each of the park operation districts. We are trying to take a specialized focus in how we do athletic fields. That unit will coordinate and work very closely with our sports scheduling group, which in turn works very closely with JC and the Sports and Entertainment Group. So, we, again, operationally are realigning very purposely around our, the way we do athletics as a business and the way we do athletics as a community service. And by doing that, that frees up our five operating district, park operational districts, to focus on the quality of the parks and the parks within their geographic service districts that they are responsible for. So, here, this is where the community quality comes into play. This is, in no particular order, some trail improvements that we've had to do down at Ettrick, addressing the floating boardwalk at Robius and making some landscaping improvements there, new picnic pavilions. We are investing quite a bit in our operational capital currently, again, on the athletic side to visit facilities like Daniel Park and reworking the softball complex there, redoing fields to a higher quality up at Huguenot Little League. So, again, this operational focus for us is on taking the assets that we have and making sure that the house is in order and in good standing, and making sure that the way we go about daily maintenance and operations is consistent across the board. And then, the last prong of our, really, our true north is we, of course, are very closely aligned with responsibilities on the school side. We certainly, as part of that field complement, it's about a 60-40 split of fields that we maintain or that we have available in our portfolio that are on the school side of the ledger. But specifically on school maintenance, we also, under a formalized agreement, maintain their general ground. So, we, to the value against the school's budget of about $2.6 million, take responsibility for all general mowing at schools, maintaining all of the landscape and playground mulch that's put down annually. We do weed control. We do hedging. We do tree trimming. We do general, you know, front-of-house landscape beds. We maintain parking lots for potholes and for signs, parking signs. for potholes and for signs, parking signs, circulation signs, speed signs that need to be maintained. We do snow plowing. We didn't fortunately have to do any of that last year, but that is on our list. And we also work collaboratively with each principal to essentially create a communication and dialogue, so that we are responsive to the individual school needs. One of the things that we really have gotten better at, I think, is we sort of took that lump sum and broke it down into a true unit cost. So we can tell exactly, per school, per task, what our true cost is, just as a landscape contractor would charge. We're very market competitive. And I like to think the other thing that we bring to the table is that relational value. So the principals and the office managers that typically run the schools, anyway, all are on a first-name basis with the park district manager that is over their area. There's a hundred and seventy school grounds. Each park district roughly gets about fifteen or so sites to maintain. So again, it's based on relationships. It's based on knowing our customers. And it's based on doing the work. And, you know, I will end with just a thank you again to Echo Chief Center. Thank you to this board for helping us do better in our mission to work with the community. We are very diverse in what we do. And I do like to always remind people, at the end of the day, and that's why I really like this theme for this year, is that we grow the community. We grow, we grow grass. We grow people. We grow activities. But when we come back to True North, what we're trying to do is add value back for the community. One of the statistics that I'll leave you with from our National Association is that eighty-four percent of, and they did this as a national poll, but of respondents rank quality of life and access to parks and park amenities as their top choice for choosing to locate to a particular area. And four in five respondents similarly identify at the local level, park and recreation activities and facilities to be of fundamental importance to them and their local government portfolio. I've been in this business long enough to see that that is a drastic change over some thought. I think we all saw it coming off of COVID. But again, I think the community recognizes our value. And we very much take that as a sacred trust, that we are going to work within that space of working in that declination between magnetic north and our north, to work with the community on what needs to happen going forward. So thank you all again for your support. Thank you for your time this afternoon. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Members, questions or comments? Just one comment. Thank you for everything you do. I know that every time we have a citizen that calls in with something that needs to be addressed, your staff is right on it. And it gets taken care of immediately. And we get the feedback from the community on how happy they are with everything that gets done and how fast it gets done. So pass that along to your staff. Thank you again.
Thank you. I will.
Mr. Chairman, if I may briefly, I just want to say thank you so very much for opening the Beulah Recreation Center. I think that's a wonderful asset for the community. We appreciate that so very much. And the hiring of high school students. If we can do anything to facilitate or help via the workforce consortium, we're glad to do that as well, as our goal is to jobs and young people in our community. So thank you again so very much and all we can do. Appreciate that. And I also appreciate the ADA compliance. It's something we're looking at regionally with tourism, is making sure that we're ADA compliant as much as possible wherever we are. So I'd say a move that we committed to last month in the Richmond Region Tourism Board Meeting. Thank you.